Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Northampton Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Wednesday, September 22nd, 2021 to order. We'll start out with a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. Flags are behind me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First, I'd just like to start out by thanking everyone for accommodating and being patient with our social distancing and wearing masks. We just want to keep everybody safe. Health and safety of our residents, our employees, and all our visitors is really important, and we want to try to keep that up as long as we have to. We do have a couple of special presentations tonight. So for first, I'd like to introduce Bucks County Commissioner Bob Harvey, and he's going to spend a few minutes giving us an update from the county. Good evening.
Good evening. It's okay if I take this off?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I appreciate you giving me a little bit of your time. I spent 16 years as a township supervisor in Falls Township. So I'm looking at your agenda and remembering all MMOs and the land development questions and when those were the hard things I had to deal with. So I have a lot of respect for what you do. And one of the other, the reason why I'm here is in my 16 years in Falls, the connections we had with county government were very, very limited. Like you, Falls was one of the biggest municipalities in Bucks County, and yet it was hardly ever a time I remember any county officials coming to Falls just to talk about issues or talk with us and work with us. And as I ran for this office, that was one of the things I wanted to change. Your constituents are the constituents of the commissioners as well. So if we can help you do your job, it's obviously that's part of our job. And one of the things I started doing right after I got sworn in was coming to council meetings and supervisor meetings just to give an update on county issues. I had to stop that when the world broke in the spring of 2020, and I just started up again. So I wanted to come just talk about a few things. And COVID obviously is still the number one story. We, like the rest of the country, we've seen rising cases over the past several weeks. Thankfully, hospitalizations in Bucks County are still pretty low. As of last check, we had about 65 people in Bucks County hospitals with COVID. That's over six hospitals from north to south. So that's a very manageable number, obviously, which it was zero. But we're comfortable there, and the hospitals are in very, very good shape and handling things well. Vaccinations, we are still offering free vaccines through the county at Nishamni Mall and also at the former Giant Supermarket on Route 263 in Warwick Township. No appointment necessary. Walk in. Obviously, now it's easy to get vaccines almost anywhere, but we are encouraging people to get vaccinated. We know that that is the surest way past this, the surest way to get rid of masks, the surest way to stop the social distancing and move on. It's obviously affecting all aspects of life, as you know. We do have about 31,000 people in the county who have gotten their first shot of Moderna or Pfizer and never got their second. Not sure why that is. We're assuming it's a couple reasons. It's possible that people had a bad reaction to the first shot, maybe don't want to get the second one. If you remember when the shots were first being given out, seems like forever ago, you had to get your second shot wherever you got your first one. And a lot of people traveled quite a distance to get that first shot. Some people weren't even, they were in different states and got their first shot. We're thinking, maybe some people assume they still have to go back to that first place to get, and that's not the case. Okay? You can go anywhere and get that second shot. And we don't know if there are people who just think that they had that in their head 21 days after this shot, they have to get the second one, or 28 days later, they have to get the second shot. And now maybe they think they're so far past that that it screws something. No, doesn't matter. Just come get your second shot, whether it's from us or from your local drugstore or wherever. We just really need people to do that. And we're hoping that that will help us turn the tide, really. We also want to touch a little bit on the election. I see on your agenda you are looking at the lease approval for a ballot box, a drop box, in the library here. That was one of the things we did over the summer. We reached out to the libraries. I came and actually toured your library here in Northampton just to see what kind of a site it would be, its ideal. Chester County does something similar. They have drop boxes inside libraries. To us, it was made perfect sense. Places that have great parking, ADA accessible, everyone knows where they are. The drop boxes will be available starting about two weeks or so before Election Day. The drop boxes will be open the same hours as the library, and they're inside the library, not outside. And so if anybody is looking to do a mail-in ballot or an absentee ballot and to drop it off, they can go, they can mail it, of course, if they want to, or they can take it to your library here in Northampton when the library's open and put it in. And it'll be like that. It'll be open until 8 o'clock on Election Night. It's when the polls close. That's when the boxes close. And the boxes will be emptied every day by county staff, and those ballots that are inside will be taken up to the county, and the processing will begin with them. And it'll happen every time that they're open. In terms of, again, going back to COVID a little bit, over last year, the county had four different grant programs, the Bucks Back to Work Grant for small businesses. We gave out about $27 million in grant money to about 1,300 businesses. We are launching another round of that program, hopefully next month is the plan, for people to be able to, small businesses, 49 employees or less, to be able to apply for a grant through the county. The grants we've given out have ranged from a few thousand dollars up to $50,000 over the past year. And so we're looking forward to being able to do that using some of the American Rescue Plan money. And finally, just want to touch on environmental issues. We came in with a goal. All three commissioners really united in the goal of doing as much as we could to promote alternative energy and protect the environment. We are entering into an agreement with Montgomery County, Chester County, and Delaware County on what's called a power purchase agreement, which, if it works, and we're in the process of hiring a consultant as we speak, for the four counties, it'll bring a large-scale solar energy facility to somewhere in southeastern PA, which will provide for the energy for the four county governments. Maybe not 100% of it, but hopefully a good size of that. So that's a pretty cutting-edge thing that we're excited about getting into. And once it does become, I'm going to think positive, once it does go into effect, it could be open to municipalities, school districts, nonprofits, hospitals, things of that nature, who also want to join in and get their electricity from that solar facility. So we're excited about that, and we'll keep you up to date on that. We also formed a Ready for 100 Committee. The county has adopted the Sierra Club's Ready for 100, one of the few counties in Pennsylvania to do that. So we're looking at county offices, how we can save energy and how we could be more green. And the final thing, just to make you aware of, is we have put together a Model Alternative Energy Ordinance through our planning commission. Now, again, from my experience as a township supervisor, I know how expensive it is to rewrite your zoning laws, to make major changes in your zoning laws, how complicated and time-consuming it can be. So I had the county do it for you. So the county took the time to write up a model energy ordinance that deals with, and this is for residential, commercial properties, not the large scale, for solar panels, small-scale wind, geothermal, et cetera. And the idea being, if we can have some uniformity across the 54 municipalities, it helps, first off, helps your staff, as long as, if this is up to date, this ordinance, somebody comes in and wants to do something, whether it's a developer or it's somebody who already owns a property and wants to, has questions about wanting to move to something alternative in terms of energy, you'll have an answer, and you won't have your staff necessarily having to figure out, well, how does this fit in? Because a lot of municipalities already had something on the books. I know in Falls we did, but ours and Falls is pretty dated and also only dealt with solar. And so this is more comprehensive. So that has been shared. I mean, our planning commission, Evan Stone, who I think has worked with you before, he helped oversee the writing of this. And so he's welcome to, or he's excited to be able to come out and talk to anybody who wants to listen about adopting it. We're adopting it in some form. Obviously, it would be your ordinance. So that's kind of my update. Again, I appreciate your time, and I hope you have a good meeting.
Of course, I have a question.
Sure. Yeah, that's fine.
I'm just, I'm very interested in the small business grants. How are we going to get, how do you get the word out about that? And then how can we help get the word out to our local businesses? Is there something you can send to us that we can turn around and make sure we get back out?
Yeah. One of the things we started when COVID hit, and we've sort of tapered off because we were doing it very regularly, is regular Zoom meetings with municipal managers. Mr. Pellegrino is always there, as I'm sure will not surprise you, and a very active participant. And so we've used those to launch initiatives. We will be sending out things to managers, the information. We use our social media. We use the chambers of commerce to make everybody aware of this. And so once we're, once we have the parameters of it set and we're ready to launch it, we will absolutely do as much as we can in terms of outreach, because we want to help people.
That's great. Thanks. Yeah, we want to share it as well.
Sure, absolutely.
I just have one.
Again, red is good.
You're on.
With the emergency management funds that you will be receiving from the state, because we are now got the money from the federal government for our disasters, how is that going out to the different municipalities?
Well, I think the state, the process of that is, the first thing we did was we looked for individual assistance with what's called IA. And it was our team of emergency management people, in addition to the local emergency management people, reaching at the individuals, individual property owners, business owners, homeowners who had lost a home or had some kind of damage. That was sort of the first priority. And those figures were assembled all last week in terms of identifying properties, identifying how much damage there was, and things like if the person had flood insurance or didn't have flood insurance, if it was flood damage. Public assistance is the next one, which is where it would come in for governments like yours and the county, as the counties had over a million dollars in damage to our property, bridges and parks and things like that. So that information, I think, also was sort of gathered through your emergency management coordinator sharing it with ours. And that's going to then sort of passed on to Pima and FEMA to give them an idea of this is what we need. Northampton Township needs this much. Here's what they need it for. So that is all in the works. It doesn't move as quickly as you might think. Right now, our main focus is on setting up a disaster resource center, which will be open next week for individuals who had serious problems and need to come. And that one-stop shop basically is going to have state agencies, FEMA, county, nonprofits, for people who are looking for some kind of assistance.
So our residents should call the county to find out where that center is?
I think it may also be on your website. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say two things. One is that the small business program grant, I think is very beneficial for a lot of small business in the area. I know a number of small businesses in Northampton benefit from that, so I would certainly encourage that. The other thing, I've gotten a lot of feedback from residents pertaining to the Rails or Trails, and a lot of people have seen what's happening in Upper South, and they're excited about that. And I know the plan now is to have it go from Bristol Road up to the Churchill Nature Center.
Yes.
I think that's the first, next leg of the thing. Any thoughts of that, or any updates on that, what's happening?
I know that we are looking for grant money through the various sources. We get it from DVRPC, the state, et cetera. So it's obviously, you know, there's planning grant money, then there's construction grant money. I know there were some, I guess it was probably in Northampton Township, there was part of the construction of the more recent trail, there was some issues with, so we're focused on fixing that to make sure it's good to go. But yeah, we're committed to expanding the trail program and doing as much as we can with whatever funds we can find, however we find them.
Yeah. Well, it's interesting. Numerous residents have come up to me, actually live on the trail, near the trail, and who are against it. And now have come to me and said, you know, it wasn't that as bad a thought either as I thought it was.
Yeah.
They're very supportive of it. So, you know, because I was a big advocate of it. I get a lot of questions on it. So it's good to hear that you're very supportive of that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, definitely.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. I do have one other special presentation, but I do have two orders of business to take care of. First, first thing is, I just want to remind everybody, public comment. If you would like to make public comment on agendas items, and you could sign up in the back, there is an agenda item. And then there's also a public comment sheet for the end of the meeting, which is open public comment. So please put your name on that, and then I'll call you up when the time comes. Second, would like to add one agenda item to the agenda tonight, and that is to consider a resolution to declare a state of emergency in regards to the trash. And in order for us to add an agenda item now, we're required to bring it up in the beginning of the meeting and vote on it. So I'd ask Eileen if she could make a motion.
The reason we're doing it is that there are new votes.
I always think I can speak louder than that. There is a new regulations from the Commonwealth that require us to formally adopt a motion if we have to add items to our already published meeting agenda. We will be considering that resolution as Chairman Selzker said, and our, in order for us to add that, we have to do a motion. May I do the motion?
Please.
I move to add a proposed resolution to the September 22nd, 2021 board meeting agenda to consider declaring a state of emergency to address waste collection issues in the township.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Eileen, anything to add? Kim, Barry?
Nope.
Frank? Nope. None for me. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion carries, and we will hear that under unfinished business, since we've already had discussion on that. So that would be first. Please, if you, because I asked about public comment before we did that, that would be included in agenda items. So if you'd like to talk around that, you can sign up for that comment as well. Moving on, we have a presentation to make. We have a 300th Anniversary Slogan winner, and Eileen will take care of that.
Do we need a drum roll, Eileen, or?
This, am I saying your name right? Sowers?
Yes.
Yes. This is Nancy Sowers, and she is the winner of our 300th Anniversary Celebration Slogan. Da-da-da, we're supposed to put the slogan up. We had over 70 entries, and Nancy's was the one that won. And we want to thank all of our residents who put in an entry, and we hope that you will be looking forward to our wonderful celebration next year. So in, from the Board of Supervisors and as our 30th Anniversary Committee Chair, I would like to present you with this plaque and also a gift. So here is your gift. And as everyone can see, it's "Cherishing the Past, Celebrating the Present, Welcoming the Future", 1722 to 2022. So may we shake?
Oh, yes.
I have to ask before I do that. Thank you. Do you want to say anything?
No?
Thank you.
Congratulations, Nancy. That's a great slogan. Critics, we're very excited for our 300th Anniversary Celebration. And there's plenty more to come. You'll be hearing in the coming months. All right, we'll move on to public comment. You could put that on the table if you don't want to hold it while you speak. So just your name and address for the record. Thanks.
Nancy Sowers, 104 Windmill Drive in Holland. I was very excited to hear, well, first of all, thank you for the honor of the slogan. I didn't want to say anything two minutes ago, but I'll just say thank you again to the committee. Very happy to hear about the trash being added to your agenda. Trash and recycling have been pretty good on Windmill Drive, but yard waste has been the big problem. It's been about, I think, seven or eight weeks since we've had yard waste pick up, and that's too long. So I just wanted to, since I was here anyway, just say, please help us. Please have somebody come by. It's really disgusting, like rotting and flies, mosquitoes. It's also a health hazard to have the yard waste sitting out as well as the trash. So appreciate anything you can do on that. That's it.
Thanks, Nancy. I don't know if you were going to hang for a little bit, but it's going to come up pretty soon, that discussion, if you'd like to wait for it. I think you'll be happy to hear some of these things. Anything, anybody else? No? Okay. We'll move on to consent items, approval of the minutes. Frank?
If there are no objections, I request that the minutes be approved by unanimous consent.
Okay, they're approved by unanimous consent. Thank you, Frank. Kim, a pound payable?
Yes, I have the bills list for September 8th, 2021. Total off funds, $465,026.75. And then I have the bills list for September 22nd, 2021. Total off funds, $1,750,784.28.
Any objections?
Nope.
Okay, approved by unanimous consent. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to unfinished business, and this is where we are going to consider a resolution to declare a state of emergency. Frank?
As we are all aware, the township's contracted trash collector, JP Mascarow and Sons, continues to underperform on its obligation to collect and dispose of household waste, recycling materials, and yard waste throughout our community. This has resulted in hundreds of calls each day to the township office to report missing collections and the accumulation of waste materials on township streets and in the front yards of homes. Mascarow tells us that the delay in collecting waste materials is due to a labor shortage and the lack of CDL drivers, drivers with commercial driver's licenses, and back-end workers as well, and continues to assure the township that this situation will improve, although no evidence to date suggests that improved collection will happen anytime soon. Given the volume of household waste, recycling materials, and yard waste littered throughout the township, the board finds it necessary to take extreme measures to address this potential health and safety crisis by declaring a state of emergency that will allow the township to take whatever extraordinary steps are necessary to address the waste collection problem. While our options to improve collection services may be limited, declaring a state of emergency is a good first step in response to this potential crisis. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I move to adopt Resolution R 21-21, declaring a state of emergency in response to the lack of adequate waste collection services from the township's contracted waste hauler, JP Mascarow and Sons Incorporated, and to authorize the township administration to take whatever steps are feasible and necessary to address the potential health and safety issues resulting from the delay in waste collection services throughout the community.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'm going to start with board comment, and I'm going to start tonight. The Board of Supervisors recognizes the severity of the trash collection problem, and for this reason is considering approving an emergency declaration resolution. Resolution will allow the township to hire other waste haulers, if available, to supplement Mascarow's efforts to collect waste, and to use whatever other means that may be immediately available to address the collection issue. The township staff continues to have daily contact with Mascarow representatives and coordinate with route supervisors on missed collections reported by residents. Township staff also continues to log residents' calls. We urge everyone to continue to report missed collections. Even though it's frustrating to continue to do it, we need to have a record of each missed collection. Please send that to trash@nhtwp.org or by calling 215-357-6800 and leaving a message. You're going to hear in a few minutes, but there's an extraordinary number of calls. That's why it's important to just leave a message. We are logging every one. It's very difficult to talk to every single person, and that's unfortunate, but that's what we're up against. The township staff will be looking for other ways to clean up our streets and previously contacted other waste haulers in the region. Unfortunately, we've been advised that they have no surge capacity, that is, that they are only staffed for the contracts they have, and they can't help Northampton out. This leaves the township very few options. The township has told Mascarow that trash and recycling collection is the priority for health and safety reasons. We want to get the food out of the streets. It's very important. Yard waste will be collected after trash and recycling. Mascarow will continue to collect yard waste at the Curbs on Saturdays. The township is going to direct Mascarow to place dumpsters for yard waste only at the following locations: Big Meadow Park, down on Stodyford Road, the Township Maintenance Garage behind the firehouse on 283 Hattborough Road in Churchville, at the St. Leonard's Ball Field parking lot, there'll be a dumpster, and that's in addition to the current drop-off station at the old police station on 50 Township Road. So there will be four areas where you can bring your yard waste if you desire. It is not a requirement to bring it there, but if you can and are willing to do so, we want to give an option to have a place to take it. In addition, we plan on implementing a 20% reduction to start in the monthly payment to Mascarow. That's 20% to start. We'll research it, evaluate it, and if it needs to go up, it'll need to go up, to cover the costs that are going to be associated with the activities that are covered in this emergency declaration. Mascarow continues to tell us that their labor-sorted situation is improving, but we have not seen any evidence to support that. As a matter of fact, we're hearing more and more fairly often, and we're getting more and more complaints. I just want to share, there is a staggering number of complaints logged by the township staff, over 15,000 in the last 15 months, mostly in the last four or five months. We, if we declare an emergency, we're asking for the community and public to help us. One of the reasons we declare an emergency is to get community help and support. We want to all come together and try to resolve this quickly, but it is really important that you know that the township staff and supervisors are working on this daily. So those are my comments. Start with Eileen? Oh, Frank, I'm sorry. Start with Frank.
I think that one of the points, one of the points that Adam made about the fact that we have a state of emergency and that we need to come together as a community to help resolve this. We're coming into the period where we know yard waste is, it's going to triple or quadruple over the next couple of weeks. So we expect to see a heck of a lot of bags out there and trash cans, unfortunately. We're asking the community to help us out of this a little bit. You've heard about four different locations where you can take yard waste. That really only works if you put it in a bag and take bags there. I mean, Mascarow has missed my street, I think, this Saturday would have been five times, and I'm probably better than some other places. What I did is, I bagged mine. I put it in the back of my SUV, picked up a neighbor's bag, because that was out there, and drove it up here to the parking lot, right at the old police station. And when you're leaving tonight, if you look at what's going on there, you'll see that truck there, and you will see piles of bags behind the truck. Mascarow will come and take that out of there and put another truck there. When I came last Friday, he had a worker there, so I just pulled up, popped the rear section of my vehicle, and he came and took the bags out and threw them in the threw them into the truck. I think one of the things we can do, and this, this is kind of, not a big deal, but just to encourage the use of bags, the township has trash, has yard waste bags here. Normally, I pay, I think you pay 50 cents a bag for those bags. The township will make those bags available to any resident who wants to take them, to bag their, bag their yard waste and take it to one of those locations. We know every resident can't do that, but everybody who can, that's less waste out there on our streets, and it's helpful to the whole community. So I would simply ask if everybody can just pitch in, well, we're working through this, help us by doing what you can to get your yard waste to one of these locations. I'm going to continue to do it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. And I think, just for clarity, I think what Frank was saying is that, as far as the bags go, that the township is going to temporarily suspend the fee for bags, so you can come up to the township building and get free bags to help try to solve this problem. Thanks. Eileen?
Okay. One thing that we hope that our residents understand is that we are also township residents. So our trash and our recyclables and our yard waste is not being collected also. So it's not like we are doing things, you know, not taking everyone into consideration, but it's affecting us as well. I know that, I don't know if some of you saw, there was this, and Dr. Rose is going to speak about it more, but there was a commercial ad that we found that Mascaro put out about asking for commercial business. If you need a trash hauler for your commercial business, call us. And we were just appalled that they can't pick up ours, but they're putting it out, that they want more business. Our trash and our recyclables pickup is very haphazard, but mine, and I think yours, it gets picked up. May not be the day, may not be a week, but by, usually by the end of the week, it's picked up. But the yard waste pickup is non-existent. So this energy declaration will give the township different difficult measures to address this problem that we could not do before, and we are thinking outside the box. We are not just depending on Mascaro. We are not just, we want help from everyone to bring it, but there, we know there's going to be people that can't, so we're going to look into other measures to help get that yard waste picked up. It smells. When people say to me, oh, what do you care about the yard? It stinks, and it gets wet, and it's ridiculous. And if it gets really wet, then all of a sudden, the bag breaks, and then all of a sudden, it's like you got to clean up all the waste all over again. So please understand that we care, and that's why this emergency declaration is being done. Thank you, Sam.
Thanks, Ellen. Kim?
I, all I can say is, I had, I was the one that had called Mr. DeGeneres from Mascaro to come and talk a few meetings ago, because it has just been horrible, and I have talked, I have talked to him numerous times, and this past weekend, it just pushed, when I saw that ad that they were looking for, they were looking for more business, for business trash pickup, when they're not taking care of what we do. So I want to read to you a letter, and my letter in essence to Mr. DeGeneres is basically what we all feel, and so I'm going to read my letter. Dear Al, I'm writing you again because I'm at a loss with the service from your company. Let me tell you about my life at present. I wake in the morning and look outside to see my trash recyclables and my neighbor's yard waste sitting by the street. I then go to the gym where I'm inundated with comments about the trash situation. Then I go to the senior center to teach, where I'm yelled at by seniors who want to know, when is somebody going to pick up their yard waste that is sitting by their curb for at least five weeks now? I go to my chiropractic office where parents, where patients tell me about their trash situation. Then I run to the township building to sign checks, including yours, which I sign every month, that is $220,505.20. And our employees are at the end of their rope, because residents have been screaming at them, calling them names, and harassing them because their trash is not being picked up. They are frustrated by your lack of communication and lack of getting the work done. I then see our manager and assistant manager, who have spent most of their day calling residents, not that they have anything more important to do, like running our township. I then drive home and look at the way our township has started to look like a rundown slum, with trash and waste piled up everywhere. I go into my house to be reminded by my husband of how bad the trash situation is. Later, before I go to bed, I glance at Facebook and neighbors to see residents angry and complaining and swearing to vote us out of office. This is becoming my normal day. You said after the government subsidy that it would be remedied. If nothing else, it has gotten worse. Where do we go from here? Last night, I got sent this ad where you're looking for more work? Are you guys for real? Take care of what you have now. We need action now. Now, I did get a letter from Mr. DeGeneres, and he's like, I apologize for our service has affected you on a daily basis. The only thing I could say is that the last week, we have seen an uptick in applications for drivers and helpers. We're moving on these applications as quickly as possible, blah, 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 blah. By the way, the ad that you referred to was not related to residential service, which is where we are deficient these days, not that it is of any solace to you. Well, I'm sorry, they need to take, if they have extra drivers to do business, they need to bring those drivers to our town to work for our residents. And all I could say is that I am so, we are all so frustrated, and just so you know, I just ask our residents, please, when you call the township, our manager, our assistant manager, our receptionist, our assistant secretary, all our employees, they're not the cause of the problem, and we are working diligently. So please, have a little kindness for them. They are writing down every single name, every single number, and we are doing our best, trying our best to think out of the box and do something. So please, 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 try to be kind to our employees. They're working extremely hard, and that's all I have.
Thanks, Kim. Barry?
Yeah, thanks, Adam. And obviously, I agree with everything that's been said here tonight. I think the trash is a major issue for the township right now, so the state of emergency is really an important step that we're going to take. That's going to give us a lot of ability to do certain actions. One of the actions I really especially like is that it's where the money is. As Kim indicated, we're paying $220,000 each month for the service, and they're not providing the service. And shame on us, we're not going to do that anymore. We're going to stop, first month, starting October 1, we're going to deduct 20%. So that's $44,000. Now, if this problem continues another 30, 60, 90 days, maybe we'll take another 20% off and go down to 40%. I think, right now, if you think about it, Mascaro's gaining the same amount of money each month, but they're not paying for the labor, not paying for the trucks, not paying for anything. So they're actually making more money here. So I think if they feel more pain, they'll be able to realize our pain and be able to take action here. So I fully support this, and the board's been working extremely hard on this, a big issue, and the township has done an excellent job in trying to deal with it. But I think the state of emergency is going to give us the tools that we need to kind of take further action here, so fully support it.
Thanks, Barry. I just have one final comment, and that is that Eileen kind of summed it up best. We're appalled by this whole situation. It is just totally unacceptable. I agree with Kim. Please be kind to the township staff. They really are trying hard. I mentioned earlier, we have over 15,000 incidents. That's 15,000 calls, you know, or emails, or contacts, and sometimes one contact is not just one resident. Somebody's calling for their whole street. So try to multiply that out. It has been an enormous resource drain on the township. We should be working on parks and rec. We should be working on paving on the streets. We should be working on health and safety, other than trash for our residents, not trash. That's why we contracted out. We're going to take, assuming this motion passes, we're going to take the measures necessary in order to affect this properly, and that's what we're going to do, and I think you'll see that, and be open to out-of-the-box thinking, as Eileen mentioned. So with that, I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor of declaring the emergency declaration indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
Does the manager or the attorney have anything more to add, do you think, or no?
Hey, Bob's talked enough about trash.
Yeah.
I don't think there's anything I can add to what all of you said.
I saw you scribbling as we were talking.
What I would reiterate to the public is, please, don't beat our staff up. You can beat me up all day, but please don't beat up on the staff. They're working diligently every day, and we're all spending an inordinate amount of time on this issue, which we shouldn't have to do. That's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on in the agenda, except I lost my agenda. Oh, there it is. New business. First, we're going to, consideration of a plan, Triumph Building Group preliminary and final plan of land development. Barry?
Sure. Is the applicant here, please?
Yes, Joe Blackburn from Whistle Pearlstein.
Joe, okay.
I think we're missing a microphone. Is there a stand?
Second stand.
No, 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 no.
Joe Blackburn from Whistle Pearlstein. On behalf of the applicant, I'm joined by Chris Holmes from Holmes Cunningham, the project engineer, and Chris Pinto, principal of the applicant Triumph Development Group, LLC.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. So for the residents' benefits, this is, and Bill, if you could put it up on the screen, a picture of the property, that would be great.
It's coming.
So is Christmas, Bill. All right, so Hanukkah, everything, all the holidays are coming. So actually, this is the finished product. So if we could go back to the original, where we are today, Bill, that'd be great. So 8:40, Second Street Pike is in downtown Richborough. It's a, it's a property that's been blighted for many, many years. Many people call it an eyesore. It's caused a lot of problems. I know there was water damage in the front building there, and, you know, has not been occupied for many years. The same thing with the back structures there. So before, we have us tonight as an applicant, and basically, what they want to do is they want to redevelop the property, and they've gone to the zoning hearing board, they've gone to the planning commission, they've asked for some, you know, minor variances for it, and the proposal is to develop four residential properties. So the first building in front, that'll be torn down, and my understanding, it'd be four residential units to be put there. And then the second building in the back, which is a warehouse, that first floor will be restored to an office, and then the second floor, we have two apartments on top of that. And then in the back of the property has a small building today, which has a single apartment and a studio workshop down below, now be converted to residential properties. So maybe if you could just take a minute and just describe a little bit more in your own words what the project is, things like that, and then I can do is just read the variances and things like that, so.
Yeah, good evening again. Joe Blackburn from Whistle Pearlstein. Thank you for the time tonight. We are here with respect to the applicant's application for preliminary and final land development approval concerning the property at 8:40, Second Street Pike. As Mr. Moore previewed, the property is currently improved with three structures, the first of which is actually a single-family detached dwelling, very close to Second Street Pike, which has, over a course of years, been divided into multiple office rental spaces, all vacant now. Moving away from Second Street Pike, you have an approximately 2,600, or excuse me, 2,200 square foot garage warehouse structure, which again, over the course of years, has devolved into basically just off-storage rental space. And then the further structure away from Second Street Pike is an approximately 700 square foot footprint structure, which does currently contain, or did most recently contain a residential apartment unit with another workspace on the first floor. Applicant proposes as part of tonight's application to redevelop the entirety of the site, as Mr. Moore said, taking down that single-family detached structure on Second Street Pike and replacing it with a structure similar to that, which you see on the rendering before you, which would be home to four residential units. The garage/warehouse structure would then be expanded by 500 square feet approximately, and the first floor of that structure would be about 2,600 square feet of office with two residential apartments above. And then the rearmost structure, again, which is currently one unit, would be further devised into two residential units, a top and a bottom. So all in all, eight residential units, approximately 2,600 square feet of office space. I think it's important to add that of that 2,600 square feet of office space, about 1,800 square feet would be the relocated offices of Triumph Development themselves. They are a builder developer here in Bucks County, presently located in Wrightstown Township in Penns Park. They would be relocating their base of operations to this site. Just to be clear, there's no construction activity, no staging of equipment, no trucks, materials, deliveries, anything at all occurring here. It's simply the base of operations, occasional consumers maybe coming in to pick some finishes, things like that. I think that also has an added benefit, however, in that it would effectively provide an onsite landlord. You don't have the concern of a deteriorating eight units. You have a vested property owner onsite, interested, and committed to the upkeep of not only its office space, but the eight units in the vicinity, which, again, have been designed in large measure to respect the village overlay design concepts within which the property is located. This is, although the first time before this board, been in the pipeline for quite some time, we went to the zoning hearing board back in July of 2020 to receive, to request and receive variances for impervious and parking. We then, in, excuse me, in, later that year in October, submitted our first round of plans, got the township engineer and all the professionals' reviews of those plans, revised our plans, resubmitted in June of this year, and most recently appeared before the planning commission a week or two ago, got their favorable unanimous recommendation. So not withstanding the fact that this is the first time this board is seeing it, it has gone through quite extensive review by the township professionals and boards, such that I'm pleased to report that the most recent review letter from Gilmore Associates dated July 28, 2021, and all the other professional reviews, at this point, all contain will-comply items, with the exception of the waivers, which are enumerated in a letter from Holmes Cunningham dated September 13, 2021. I'm happy to go through those waivers if the board would be so desired, or so desire that. However, suffice it to say that they are in large measure only waivers to respect and acknowledge the existing nonconformities, or rather, the existing conditions of the site. We have a very narrow and a very constrained site here, so there's obviously some issues with, you know, plantings in the parking lot, or dry aisles, backup areas, but again, that is exclusively a result of the existing condition of the site, nothing that we're doing to exacerbate any of those issues. So against that backdrop, I'll make myself, Ms. Holmes, or Mr. Pinto available for any questions that any members of the board may have.
Sure, thank you. May I can start you? I think, are you the same builder that did the housing development off of Second Street Pike in Wrightstown?
On the left side.
If you're going from Northampton to Wrightstown, on the right.
Right as you're going out of town, right, right next, or right after the distributor? Not that I.
Yeah.
No, that was not. I know there's been some stormwater issues there, so.
No, no, okay, no, no, I wasn't looking for that, so. Maybe I'd like to do, if I could add, I'll read the motion, and then I have a couple of comments on, and then we have board comments.
Yeah, I think there's some questions.
Sure. Okay, do you want me to just read the motion first? Yeah, if we could. So I move for approval of the Triumph Development Group land development project located at 8:40, Second Street Pike, preliminary final draft of land development, SLD 21-6, subject to compliance with the Gilmore Associates review letter dated July 28, 2021, the Penoni Associates review letter dated July 20, 2021, and then Mahone Associates review letter dated July 28, 2021. It is also recommended that the requested waivers be granted. In addition, approval is subject to the following conditions, and I'll read those conditions. The first condition is that the applicant shall enter into a land development agreement, escrow agreement, in the form acceptable to the township solicitor and engineer, and in compliance with the July 8, 2020 zoning hearing board recommendations and requirements. This shall include a stormwater management, maintenance, and operations agreement, a park and recreation impact fee in the amount of $1,706.15 per. renderings to ensure compliance with the village overlay district requirements. And last item, item four, is that the applicant is responsible for obtaining any outside approvals that may be necessary, including but not limited to DEP, the Conservation District, PennDOT, municipal authority. Further, approval is also granted for the submission of any documents that may be required as part of the sewage facilities planning process.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further comments, Barry?
No, the only thing I'll comment, I am pleased to see that the property is now being developed. I know in many years it was, it's a challenging property. And to be honest, I'm happy that it's a mixed use. We have some residential units being put in there. I think the addition of eight units for downtown Richborough is nice to the community. It's a nice picture, plus the offices. And I agree with the concept of having onsite property managers going to facilitate the management of the property. So I generally would support this concept.
Frank?
I really have nothing further to add. I think it was well covered.
Eileen?
Nothing to add.
Okay.
I just have one question, but I'll go to turn it over to township manager, and that is how this fits into the village overlay concept. Because we haven't really seen, I hadn't seen the color renderings, or if I did, I missed them, but all those.
Joe, I know you said that this is consistent with our design guidelines, but to my view, it really doesn't seem to fit.
Okay.
And the style, I mean, I'm looking at the architecture of the back buildings, they seem to be more consistent with our design guidelines than the front building, and that's the one on the street.
Okay.
So I think we need to have a discussion about the architecture and the colors on that front building.
And you're, Kristen, you're obviously more familiar with the designs. I know that the design criteria include things such as benches and other sort of fixtures.
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the roof lines and the brick colors, and the siding is just white, and the windows are, there's no.
Well, we are certainly a mean.
There's no shutters, there's no, I mean, it's just, frankly, it's ugly, in my opinion.
Certain people in my office may have shared that concern.
Okay.
We can certainly present some alternative renderings to the satisfaction of the township staff.
That'd be fine.
This is the first time that we've, or rather, the second time that we've unveiled the architectures, the first being the planning commission, they had no feedback. So we're happy to receive that feedback and respond accordingly. That goes without saying.
Okay. I want to highlight the fact, too, and part of the conditions of the approval is item number three, where the township shall have the final review and approval of the building architecture renderings to compliance with the village overlay district requirements.
Correct.
So that's, you know, so these are illustrations that we see tonight, but, you know, part of this conditional waiver tonight, we're saying that we want to make sure the township's happy that it meets the full requirements of village overlay.
Certainly.
So to further my comments, I'm comfortable with that, as long as it's just clear that we're going to.
And I'm sorry we're so blunt, but.
I'm used to that kind of.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thanks again. Really appreciate you redeveloping this property.
The credit goes to Triumph Development, so they're moving into the township, so.
Good.
Welcome.
Welcome, yeah.
Next, we have consideration of preliminary and final subdivision of land development for the Advent Church. Eileen?
Yes. Would the representatives? No. I didn't know where these are. It's fine. Could you please introduce yourselves?
Sure. Nate Fox of Obermeyer, on behalf of the applicant, Green Tree Contracting Group.
Heather Gill with Kelly and Close Engineers.
And with us, we have Bill Laffin of Green Tree, and we also have representatives of the seller, the Advent Lutheran Church.
You have someone here from the church?
Yes, we do.
Okay. The applicant is Advent Lutheran Church, and they are planning to subdivide their property at 45 Worthington Mill Road into three lots. They are proposing construction of single-family detached homes on half-acre lots, which, which are Lot 1 and Lot 2, as you can see on the plan, with Lot 3 being the existing church. Access to the church will continue to be provided from Worthington Mill Road. The houses on Lot 1 and 2 will have the frontage of their homes on Anslum Drive. Mr. Fox, could you please, or Ms. Gill, could you please give us an overview of your project, as well as going over the variances that you receive from the zoning board? Because I think they really do affect the plan.
Absolutely. And thank you, before we start, thank you as well, as we've had a lot of discussions going back many months with township staff and your professional consultants, and as always, it was just great to work with them, as there were a lot, a lot of different questions, a lot of different concepts we had to work through to come up with what we think is a good plan for this type of subdivision that works, works for every stakeholder involved. In order to develop these two single-family lots as shown, in the manner shown, we received the variance back in May from the zoning hearing board to allow single-family detached dwelling use on Lot 1 and Lot 2, as this is within the IP institutional public district, because it was, it is part of the church property and is going to be subdivided off. In order to develop lots of this size, we asked to permit the area dimensional development regulations of the R2 zoning district to apply to lots 1 and 2 in lieu of the AR regulation, which otherwise would have been required. We also received the variance permit Lot 3, which is the existing church property, to remain at 4.36 acres after the subdivision, where a minimum of five acres would be required. We also received the variance permit Lot 3, the church lot, to have a building coverage ratio of 8.3%, where the maximum permitted coverage is 5%, which is the maximum permitted coverage within the AR district. And then we also received the variance permit Lot 3 to have an impervious surface ratio of 26.13%, where the maximum impervious surface ratio permitted by right is 12%, which is the maximum impervious surface ratio permitted in the adjacent R2 zoning district. Should also note that there is an existing stormwater pipe that is depicted to be relocated from its current location off of the residential, to be constructed hopefully, residential lots, and that's provided for. And we're hopeful that this was satisfactory, that the township in our respects will comply with all review letters. And in addition, the waivers are what I would call garden, garden variety waivers for some minor dimensional items. I'm happy to go through those individually if you like.
It's all right. I have, I don't think you have to, because they're very.
No problem.
They're really not. I think we've gone through it.
No problem.
Ms. Gill, do you have anything else?
Have I missed, have I missed anything?
No, I think you went through everything. There aren't any comments that we will not comply. The comments, you know, we'll be able to address for stormwater, for grading, for erosion control, sewer and water.
Okay. So we have received the following, and we have reviewed these review letters. The waiver letter from Obermeyer dated July 28, our engineer Gilmore Associates dated August 30, our planner Penoni Associates dated August 23, our traffic engineer McMahon Associates dated August 27, the Bucks County Planning Commission dated June 1, and the planning commission did recommend approval of the plan at their meeting on September the 14th. Since our ordinances state that no residential houses are allowed in an IP district, which the church is in, you went and got your variances that were discussed earlier, and they were granted. And the project is going to use the SALDO ordinances for R2 zoning district, because that seems to be the district that is closest to the property. The waivers do not seem to create any issues. The cartway involved is Worthington Mill, and currently, the road has a variable cartway of, from 29 to 36 feet. A waiver is requested to not require curbs or sidewalks along Worthington Mill Road. Currently, there are no curbs or sidewalks exist on Worthington Mill Road. A waiver is requested to not require a 20-feet-wide driveway on lots 1 and 2, but instead a 10-foot. And lastly, a waiver is requested to not require streetlights along the roadway frontage, since there is not lighting on Worthington Mill Road or Anslum Drive. If we grant the waivers, then a fee in lieu of sidewalks would be approximately $18,000, and the fee in lieu for open space is approximately $6,000 for each lot. You know, you still go like this to lick your finger to turn a page, doesn't work. Then I make a motion, sir.
Please do.
I move for approval of the Advent Church subdivision, SLD 20-4, preliminary final plan of subdivision and land development, subject to compliance with the township engineer's review letter dated August 30, the township planner's review later, letter dated August 23, and the township traffic engineer's review letter dated August 27. It is further moved that the requested waivers be granted. Approval is subject to the following conditions. The applicant shall enter into a land development agreement and escrow agreement in a form acceptable to the township solicitor and engineer. This shall include a stormwater management, maintenance, and operations agreement. A fee in lieu of sidewalks is required, which totals $17,942, based upon calculations by the township engineer. A fee in lieu of recreation open space shall be submitted in the amount of $6,393.07 for each new residential lot, per the terms of the land development agreement. The applicant is responsible for obtaining any outside approvals that may be necessary, including but not limited to DEP, the Conservation District, PennDOT, the Municipal Authority, and Health Department. Further approval is granted for submissions of any documents that may be required as part of the sewage facilities planning process.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion second. Any other comments, Eileen?
Yes. Just, I have some questions. The two homes are going to be wells and septic systems.
Not wells. It's going to be water and connection to sewer. I saw that on here, too.
Okay. Could you tell, could you explain that a little more? So it's not going to be on lot? You are going to public both?
Correct.
Okay. See, that changes, that changes one of the things that I, okay, now, okay. I didn't know, because in some letters, it said public water and sewer, and then in other letters, it said on lot. So I just wanted to make sure, because, and that was one of the things that, you know, I wanted to make sure that you understood with the sewage management that had to be, but if now it's going to be through the municipal authority, I have no questions with that.
Correct.
Just one other thing, and it's not really a question, it's more of a, an opinion. We're giving you the waiver on the sidewalks. We have a trail proposal that at one time, there's, in the future, there is going to be a trail that may be very close to the church's property. And right now, sidewalks aren't there, but in the future, they are going to be. So my opinion is that I think it's good that we are accepting the fee in lieu, and to set aside for our future sidewalk projects when we get more of our bike and trail, bike and running trails, you know, set forth throughout the community. And so, you know, I, I don't under, you know, I wouldn't think of putting it up now, because we have no idea of what that would be. And more of a question that I had maybe to Bob or to Mr. Paizo, if we need an easement for something like the trail in the future, is that something that we can just go back to, or is that something that you think we need to look at now? Or, or what do you think about that?
If we need an easement, now would be the time to get the easement.
Right. Not, not to do it now. Okay.
Otherwise, you're looking at requesting from the property owner the right to grant an easement, or you're looking at condemnation for.
Okay.
Whatever right of way or easement.
May we offer a point of clarification?
Certainly.
We think you have ample room in your right of way in front of these lots, so you wouldn't even need to do that in this, in this sense, if it was on the frontage of Anslum Drive.
Okay. No, I had just seen that part of the Bucks County Planning Commission was referencing our amazing trail program that we anticipate happening. We don't know when, but it's going to be in the future. So that's why I'm saying that I think it's, it's good that we're putting that money in somewhere else to, I'm thinking. Now, does the church have public water and sewer?
That's a good question.
You do now?
Yeah.
Good. Okay. Because there was a time that you had, okay, just glad to hear that. And just the last thing, you know, really work hard with this stormwater. I saw some things in Ms. Fowler's report, you know, about runoff from the houses and where to be, and rain gardens, and, and Mr. Solomon said that now we have it, where you have to put about the maintenance of the rain gardens in the deeds, so it's not something that they, they take, and then five years from now, they don't do it anymore, and then we have to go after them. But, you know, we are paving everywhere, and so we really have to be very cognizant of our stormwater, because we have areas that that wasn't thought about years ago.
Sure.
And these poor people are flooding out. And so we have to be very, very, very careful on what we do, and to make sure that our stormwater management continues to grow like our community is.
Understood.
Okay? So just, that's the way I feel. I'm sorry. I'm done.
Thanks, Eileen.
That wasn't crisp. I'm sorry.
Any other comments?
No, no, I just want to say, I do support this concept. I think it's very attractive housing. And obviously, in this town, there's a lot of people who want to move to town, and I see a lot of development, and I think this is smart development. I appreciate the benefit to the church, too. I imagine this helps the church, too, which is a good, good benefit, too, so I appreciate that, too. And, no, I fully support it. It's a good concept, and I appreciate the applicant going through the process through the zoning hearing board and the planning commission, and, you know, getting unanimous consent with everybody. So very good. I support it.
Kim?
I also support it, and Advent is a wonderful neighbor to our community, and I'm glad this is going through.
Yeah.
Frank? Just one comment. I was surprised that the zoning hearing board approved the use variance for residential property in the IP district. I would just hope that in the future, that the township moves to correct the zoning to R2, so that it's consistent, and, you know, IP stands for institutional public, and I think that's where it should be. So I, you know, I have no problem with the project. I think it's a good project, but just, that's a technical issue for me.
Thanks. I have no further comments. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good to see both of you.
Good to see you. Thanks for having us.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Mrs. McGowan, we missed her.
Will do.
Next on the list is to consider bids for roadway improvements of Holland and East Holland Road. Frank?
This, this project kind of goes back to the dates, the, when the two schools on East Holland Road were being expanded, and recognition of some traffic issues that, that we saw at that time, that our traffic engineer had made some recommendations about, and it's finally coming to fruition here. Public bids were opened September 15, 2021, for improvements to the intersection of Holland Road and East Holland Road. These improvements include widening along the east side of Holland Road and the installation of a left-turn lane on the, in the southbound direction. For purposes of this project, additional right-of-way was acquired from the kennel property on the southeast corner of the intersection at no cost. However, the project will replace a portion of fencing and some landscaping on that property. Also obtained temporary construction easements at no cost from several of the properties on the west side of Holland Road. Township received four bids for this project, you know, and the bids were ranging from The project was recommended by our traffic engineers, McMahon and Associates, as part of a safety improvement related to the expansion, as I said earlier, of the Holland Middle School and the Holland Elementary School. And the school district, as part of their participation with this project, is contributing $20,000 toward the. $20,000 toward the cost. Based on the bids received, the township administration has recommended a contract award to associated paving contractors at the total bid amount of $175,477.37, based on the unit prices and quantities included in the bid specifications. Make a motion?
Please.
I move to award a contract to Associate Paving Contractors Incorporated, Warminster, PA, for improvements to the intersection of Holland Road and East Holland Road, at a total bid price of $175,477.37, based on the unit prices and quantities outlined in the bid specifications prepared by the township traffic engineer, and to authorize the township manager to execute all contract documents required to complete the project.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any further comment, Frank?
No.
Kim?
I just think that this is a great project, and anything to increase the safety of our roads, especially in that area, I think is very important for our community.
Thanks. Barry, any?
Yeah, I actually go down this intersection every day, and it's a, it's a nightmare, so, great news, this is very good.
Thanks.
Very positive.
Just have a question, are we looking for a light there, Ed, or do we have to wait and see how this improves the intersection?
I think we're gonna have to wait and see what, what the traffic looks like. I don't believe we've ever done a traffic study to see if a light is warranted, but to me, it doesn't appear that there's enough volume there to do, to put one in yet, but that could happen in the future.
Okay. The only comment that I have to make is, we, when the school district put up their other two schools and had all that going on, we knew that something had to be done to that intersection because of all the buses that were now becoming out that way. And just a little disappointed that the school district is only putting in $20,000 for this, because it's their children also that we're, we're worrying about their safety. And those buses come out of there, and people are going back and forth, there's no more richer, Richborough Middle School, so all of our kids are going to Holland Middle School, and I'm just disappointed that the school district didn't see fit to help us out with this a little bit more. That's all.
Thanks, Eileen, I have no other comments. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next, we have consideration of a lease and license agreement with Bucks County Board of Elections for placement of election boxes at the Northampton Library. Kim?
Yes, the Bucks County Board of Commissioners and the staff from the Bucks County Board of Elections have requested the use of the Northampton Township Library as a site for an election ballot drop box. Being centrally located and one of the largest libraries in the county, the site is ideally suited for the ease of access for the general public to facilitate the collection of voted, absentee, and mail-in ballots. Our library will be one of eight library locations within Bucks County. This agreement would be for 12 months from the date of execution. The drop box will be located near, Bill, if you could put that up, where it will be in the library. It will be near the entrance of the library. The hours of operation will occur 14 days before any election within the terms of the agreement, and will mirror the library's hour of oper, hours of operation. The drop box will be supervised by an employee of Bucks County when in use, and will be monitored by temporary video equipment installed by Bucks County General Services. No library staff will be used to supervise or operate the drop box. This agreement has been reviewed by our township solicitor, and the administration is seeking board approval to have the township manager execute this agreement. With that, I'd like to make a motion.
Please do.
I move that the Northampton Township Board of Supervisors authorize the township manager to execute the lease and license agreement with the county of Bucks as edited by the solicitor, and pending subsequent approval by the Bucks, by Bucks County, to allow the use of the Northampton Township Library as a location for a secure drop box where eligible voters may return voted absentee and mail-in ballots.
There a second?
Second.
Motion a second. Comment, anything else, Kim?
I think this is a great idea, especially for our senior citizens and residents in our township who are disabled, who have trouble, you know, driving, getting to places. I think this will be a great, great for our, our community and for our residents.
Eileen, any?
I just think this is wonderful. People have to understand that mail-in ballots are here to stay. And I am so happy to see that the county is venturing out of Doylestown and their own bill, their own buildings. And I, I'm glad to hear that there's going to be video security, and they're going to have a county person monitoring it. I don't know if that's really needed, but more towards them, that's pretty good, and I'm looking forward to putting my ballot in that box.
Excellent. Frank?
Yeah, I think it's great, it's gonna save me a ride to Doylestown, so. I, that's what, that's what I did last time, I drove to Doylestown, and my wife and I drove there so we could each put our ballots in, because you had to do it individually. The same thing's probably going to be true again here, so I'll go to the library, believe me. That's all I have.
Barry?
Yeah, it's all good, I support it.
No further comments from me. All those in, in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Frank, consider bids for salt contract.
On behalf of the Bucks County Consortium, Doylestown Borough advertised for bids for rock salt in the intelligencer, intelligencer on August 10th and August 17th, 2021. Three bids for delivered price per ton were received, $57,000, uh, $57.88 per ton, $57,000 would have been a little high. $75 per ton, or $77.80 per ton. The low bid was submitted by Morton Salt Incorporated. The proof of publication and the bid tabulation sheets prepared by Doylestown Township were provided to our township. Township manager has recommended that a contract be awarded to Morton Salt Incorporated, Chicago, Illinois, at their bid price of $57.88 per ton delivered. This year, we're paying $47.85 per ton under the current contract, and used approximately 5,600 tons last year. Our salt shed was filled to capacity at the end of the 2020-21 winter season, saving the township a considerable amount of money moving forward. Morton Salt was the provider last year for the salt contract, and we can see, just like everything else, everything's going up, and that's what, and so, the fact that we had a full shed is helpful as we move forward. I'd like to make a motion?
Please.
I move that we award a contract for rock salt to Morton Salt Incorporated, Chicago, Illinois, at the bid price of $57.88 per ton delivered to the Northampton Township Salt Shed, 150 Lees Drive, Ivyland, PA, 18974.
Second.
Motion a second. Any other comment, Frank? Any comment?
No.
Eileen?
I just, I just had this picture of, you know, the little girl on the Morton Salt containers, you know, and, and with this huge amount of salt that we're getting, and just the little girl on the side of the truck, so that's what I picture when I think of Morton.
There is a huge amount of salt in that salt shed.
Yeah, so I just think of the little girl on the side of the Morton Salt.
Kim, any comment?
I know that we don't want to think about snow and ice, but all I can say is that our township is the best with removing snow and, and, and ice from our roads, and if you drive around in Northampton, you can tell when you're in Northampton. So, great job.
Barry?
No, I'm good, I'm good.
No further comment from me. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Last item under new business is Barry reporting on the 2021 minimum municipal obligation for police and non-uniformed employees.
Sure, thanks, Ab. The administration is required by law to submit a report to the Board of Supervisors on the minimum municipal obligation. Some people refer to it as the MMO, for each of the employee pension plans by September 30th for each year for the following fiscal year. The MMO represents the funding level required by the township to maintain actuary soundness of each plan. The township has two plans, they have a police pension plan and a non-uniform employees plan. The requirement based on the actuaries' calculations is $989,583 for the police pension plan, and $991,512 for the non-uniform, and then there's a money purchase pension plan of $114,911. So the total requirement per the actuaries is $2,096,600. This is actually, the MMO for 2022 is actually $81,125 less than the previous year, the decrease attributed to deposit returns and the pension plan investments. One of the benefits that the township receives is that we received a grant from the state for $785,000 in municipal pension system state aid. So the reduction of the plan, originally our total cost would be $2,096,600, we're gaining the grant from the state for $785,000, so the net fund balance that we have to pay this year, or next year, would be $1,311,006. So that's just a report, no further actions required.
Thank you, Barry. Next, before we get into liaison reports, I just wanted to just make mention that Bob Borkowski, who was one of our tax collectors, previous tax collectors in Northampton Township, passed away this weekend. For those of you who know Bob, he's a very nice man, always helpful, and we just want to send our regards and sympathy to his family on that. So liaison reports, Kim?
Yes, the Senior Center, with the start of the fall season, the seniors are busier than ever with their activities and fundraising events. It's the start of a new season for the dart and table shuffleboard leagues. The Spanish class, tap dance class, and meditation classes are once again back on the schedule. These activities, in addition to all the great activities that pack the Senior Center's schedule. If you happen to be going in the direction of the Senior Center next Thursday, September 23rd, between the hours of 10:00 to 2:00, make sure to stop by the pavilion for the center's mum sale. Beautiful pots of mums in a wide variety of colors will be available to purchase for $10. The Boscov's Friends Helping Friends event, it's a shopping event, and anyone can participate. If you purchase a ticket in advance at the Senior Center for only $5, you will get a 25% off all-day shopping pass to Boscov's for use on Wednesday, October 16th. The center will benefit from every ticket sold, so join the fun, invite your friends and family, and start your holiday shopping early. On Friday, November 5th, the Senior Center will be holding their 16th Annual Bag and Bling Bingo, featuring fashionable fun pocketbooks and premier jewelry designs. Doors open at 6:00 PM with games starting at 7:00. Tickets are $30 in advance, $35 at the door, if tickets are still available. A limited of tickets will be sold this year. Participants may, must be 18 years or older, and the event is open to the community. This event promises to be a fun, action-packed night. There will be 20 games played, an additional special game, raffle baskets, and 50/50. There's something for everyone at the Senior Center. Why not stop in and check it out? It's awesome. The Parks and Rec brochure has been mailed, and the staff is excited to see so many people anxious to be back in the Recreation Center. In addition to the in-person classes, there are still many virtual classes being offered. Make sure to go through the brochure, and if you are interested in something, sign up right away. Many classes reach their maximum enrollment early. New classes include bar intensity, Adobe InDesign, Adobe Illustrator, and fall and winter gardening. All the programs are listed in the Park and Rec website. Just a quick reminder to all those who enter the Recreation Center, must wear a mask, and the mask can be removed if you are participating in a sport or exercise class once you are in the room and class begins. Park and Rec has created a GeoCash adventure at the Northampton Municipal Park that is scheduled for Saturday, October 2nd, from 9:00 till noon. GeoCashing is a treasure hunt that utilizes a handheld GPS unit and clues. It's a real-life adventure game with puzzles and challenges at each turn. Experienced staff will guide you how to use a GPS as you search for hidden containers to solve the challenge. The hunt is on, for details, visit the Rec Recreation's website. Lastly, October is next week, and I am happy to report that Halloween will happen here in Northampton Township. Due to the success of last year's event at the municipal park, our Halloween event will once again be held outside this year on Saturday, October 30th. The day will also include a scarecrow row contest and trunk vehicle display, where the parade contestants and the public will get to vote on their favorites. We are asking households and businesses to participate and help decorate the park with their scarecrows. The supervisors will serve as judges of the parade, selecting costume winners with an additional pet category this year. Please pre-reg, please register for the parade for planning purposes. Registration for the scarecrow and trunk events will be required. There are prizes and trophies for all winners in all events, along with treat bags for children who parade while supplies last. I cannot wait. That's all I have.
Thanks, Kim. Frank?
The Veterans Advisory Commission met this past Monday, and Mrs. Silver was kind enough to come over and brief the commission on the 300th anniversary celebration, and requested that the commission look at their proposed 2022 events and fit them into somehow with the 300th anniversary program. Members were very enthusiastic about that, and have already started thinking about what they could possibly do with Memorial Day, with Veterans Day, and with Flag Day. So we'll see how that works out. Municipal Authority, Municipal Authority is working on their budget for the next fiscal year that begins November 1st, 2021. The other issue with the Municipal Authority is last week, they had an emergency board meeting to authorize essential repair work on a sewer line along Mill Creek that was damaged during Hurricane Ida. Estimated repair costs for this sewer line and the stabilization of the creek bed is about $250,000. The Municipal Authority will be submitting that cost for disaster relief support. Representatives from State Senator Tommy Tomlinson's office and State Representative Wendy Thomas's office attended the meeting, so we're looking for their support for what we're trying to do. And lastly, with Public Works, still four streets to complete, the paver broke down, they're working to get a replacement paver. Worst-case scenario, this one gets fixed, and we're about a week, we'll, we'll start, not next week, but the following week to pick up those four streets. What's been happening with the workforce now is it's giving them an opportunity, since they're not doing that paving right now, to get back out into the basins. Hurricane Ida just really caused all sorts of problems with that basin mowing schedule, but they're out there now, and they're doing it again. That's all I have.
Thank you, Frank. Barry?
Yeah, sure, the only thing I'll add is on Second Street Pike in Richborough, a lot of residents may have noticed, there was some construction going on with the sidewalks, right in front of where the old Wawa was and, and the Getty store, Getty gas station. That's part of a grant program that was funded by the state, put sidewalks on both sides of the street and Second Street Pike, and the sidewalks go from Second, on Second Street Pike, from temperance all the way up to the cleaners, and also to, to the grocery store. So that's part of the plan that the township has, to put sidewalks throughout downtown Richborough. We're also hopeful to do the same thing in Holland in the near future, so, thank you. That's it.
Eileen?
On September the 12th, we had our library birthday party, and we had over 200 people attending throughout the afternoon. I would like to thank Dr. Rose and Fire Chief and Supervisor, Adam Selisker, for attending. Besides all the activities the library board had planned for that afternoon, the fire company brought over one of their fire trucks, and they gave free tours to the children who were extremely excited, and they were also given junior firefighter helmets. The children really enjoyed it. It was a great day with the library staff, the library board, members, Public Works, and our videographer, working together with volunteers from Council Rock South, our balloon lady.
lady, Meg Russell providing music and fun, and Mike the Ice Cream Man. And also, we had Pediatric Dental Association giving out some free things to the children. We had a great afternoon. We signed up about 20, 25 more people for library cards. So, if you are interested, watch the YouTube to see what a great afternoon we had, and you can look on our website for the link. Is that correct, Mr. Word? Okay, I thought so. The other two liaisons I have, have already been talked about with the 300 and with our, Mike being the liaison with SWIVSLAC, we do not have to go into that again. So, I'm, thank you.
Thanks, Eileen. Just a couple of reports, sorry. Starting October 3rd is Fire Prevention Week. Very important week in the fire service and for everyone's home and business fire safety. So, look out for lots of information coming your way, be it all outlets, emails, social media, et cetera. Last year, the fire department was not able to do the open house because of some of the COVID restrictions, and we shifted gears and we are going to do a fire prevention open house and display outside this year at the Township Municipal Park. And that'll be on Saturday, October 9th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. I encourage everybody to bring the whole family. As Eileen pointed out, it's more opportunity to sit on the fire trucks, get a tour of the fire trucks. We'll have fire extinguisher training, spray the hose, stop, drop, and roll practice, take pictures on the trucks, and more importantly, snacks and giveaways. So, it's everybody likes. So, we hope to see everybody there. It'll only be one event. We won't do them at each individual firehouse as we've done in past years, and we hope to see everybody there. I don't have anything else to add, and that's it for my report. Thank you.
I just wanted to thank you and Betty Satterley for having a very, very meaningful 9/11 service. So, thank you for all your efforts and Betty's efforts, and it was a memorable day to remember the people that we lost and to honor our emergency responders. So, thanks again.
Thank you. Thanks for that call out. Now, Betty and all the staff did a wonderful job of putting that together. It's not a ceremony we do every year, so a lot of work has to go into trying to organize that, thanks to all that participated. I did have one more thing, I'm sorry, and that is we had some really serious weather over the past month, and I just can't say enough how important it is to not drive through moving water. The fire department, Emergency Rescue Services, we rescued over 10 people that one night, throughout the night, in the pitch black, 2:00 AM, 3:00 AM, people driving through flooded roadways. Your car will float in inches of water, and some of these folks, I'm just gonna be a little descriptive, they were pulled out of their cars and floated away in the Chaminde Creek and were lucky to grab a tree. And it is very difficult to find somebody in pitch black at night in a raging, in a raging stream. So, we really just can't say enough, don't drive around barricades. When you see barricades, turn around, and you know, the saying is, "Don't drown, turn around," you know? So, or turn around, don't drown. Either way, it works, I guess. So, please, just tell your kids especially that are drivers. It's very unsafe. Next up is managers' report.
Just one item this evening. I want to let the board and the public know that we have two members of our senior staff who have reached a milestone in their career. Both are members of the International City Management Association and members of the Association for Pennsylvania Municipal Management. Those are our professional associations. And I want to just congratulate Bill Wirt on 25 years of public service. And Mike Solomon, our Director of Planning and Zoning, who celebrated 20 years of public So, that's it. Just know we have some very seasoned employees here, and I think that certainly contributes to, I mean, literally, when you think about it, we've got hundreds of years of public service in our group. So, I think we've got, that's why the township, I think, runs very well, and I contribute all of that to them.
I like the seasoned instead of old. That was very nice.
That it, Bob?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Solicitor's report. Mr. Peizo?
No report this evening.
No report. He doesn't have a microphone out there, so I'll just announce it for him. And as you all see, we have split up throughout the room for our social distancing, so thank you for your patience, Joe.
He took his microphone.
He took his microphone away. Thanks. Engineers' report. Jacob. All right, he says no report also, and thank you also for your patience sitting out there. Lastly, we have public comment, and we do have one person signed up, Christine Richardson. And your name and address for the.
Good evening, okay. Christine Richardson, I live on West Rambler in Holland. I felt compelled to come up and say thank you for passing the resolution for the state of emergency for the, to address the trash issue that's here in Northampton. That action demonstrates true empathy and a willingness to do whatever it takes to begin to fix this unprecedented problem, especially with the health and safety of our residents. So, thank you for that. I also really enjoyed the creative solutions, the free lawn bags, that's great, the additional drop-off locations, I think that's awesome. My personal favorite is the financial hit for JP Mascaro. When you have a deficiency in a service, you should not be fully compensated. So, that's wonderful. I would ask, and I'm sure these are ideas that you may have already spoken about, but just thinking outside the box, being that this is a state of an emergency, some of other creative solutions, if there's been some kind of data collection to see if there are specific areas in the township that have been more affected than others and prioritizing them for their pickup. I'm also very concerned about, even with the additional drop-off locations, obviously we're gonna have residents who are unable to drop off their waste, for whatever reason, you know, physical health, age restrictions. And this is gonna sound crazy because I, but it is a state of emergency, and I know that this township is filled with wonderful and kind people, and I know so many people on a personal level that would volunteer but would need a platform in which to do that. I'm a teacher, so like signup genius is something that we use. I don't know, but I do know people that if we knew that our elderly people or physically incapable people have this accumulating waste, they would help them out if they knew to get to them. So, I don't know, just a thought to consider. And the last thing is, I think that the board does a wonderful job in communicating. The one thing that I would suggest again in my profession, I know that you work diligently in taking calls and responding to emails. You're very transparent in your meetings. I know that the website contains a ton of information. One of the tools that I use that I feel like people are grateful for because they feel like they're in the loop is some kind of an email distribution list for people that want it, because email that's on our phone, things pop up, whether it be like a weekly update or as things come up, like a things-to-know kind of approach for people that, you know, it's like at their fingertips on their phones. So, a distribution list is something that I use on a regular basis in my profession, and I am often getting thanks for that because it makes people feel like, okay, that they're important enough to be included on any kind of new developments or changes. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just add, you actually reminded me, because I think I say it most meetings, but there is an email distribution list for the township. Go to the township website, please, everybody do that. It is a really great way, as you pointed out, to get information quickly. It's always current. The township staff is really good about getting, we call them e-blasts, out, and so go to the website, click on, there's a button there that says sign up, and you can put up your preferences. You can actually pick which topics you want to be notified about, whether it's meetings or current events or news flashes. And sometimes we even put out severe weather issues and things like that, so great idea. Thank you for that.
I was very surprised at how few people are signed up for our news alerts. What was your number that you gave us, Bob?
We've got 1,500 now, Bill?
We're closer to, I think we just pressed at 2,000.
2,000.
Out of how many residents do we have?
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand.
Right. So, you know, people need to.
Even if you looked at it by household, we have 13, roughly 13,000 households and another, another 2,500 non-residential properties, that's still a pretty small percentage.
Sure is. Thanks for bringing that up.
Thank you. All right, any other public comment? Okay, having no other business, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.